From now on. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a special work session of the Anamorl County Council to discuss Plan 2040, the General Development Plan, which is officially Bill 1121. Madam Secretary, please call the roll. Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey. I know I saw Mr. Volkey here. We'll come back. Ms. Trupuski.
Here.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Radvian.
Present.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
Okay, one more try for Mr. Volkey.
Present, I'm here.
Okay, great. I believe we have a representative from the Auditor's Office here with us this evening. Michelle.
Yes, present.
And Ms. Schewitt, I believe, is going to be joining us a little bit late. She's not here yet. So we have all seven council members and a representative from the Auditor's Office, present, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, so for those watching, work sessions are less formal than our regular meetings where we vote, and you may see something that looks informal to you tonight because of that. So we have a general agenda plan, which is let's talk about the general things and then move into more specifics. I was thinking we should start by asking the administration, whether it's OPZ or the Office of Law, to first answer the questions that we raised on Tuesday that they said they will get back to us on Thursday, and that we can go from there if that sounds good to everybody. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. I think that makes a lot of sense, and I'll just turn it over to Ms. Lori Blair Claasmeier, who I believe will take it from here.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Lori Blair Claasmeier, Deputy County Attorney. You should have received earlier this afternoon a memorandum that Kelly Kenny and I prepared after the work session on Tuesday to kind of give some general background as well as answering the questions that were posed and left open at the work session. Ms. Kenny can't be here this evening, so I get to discuss this with you. So the first thing we wanted to do is kind of give a little bit of an overview because I think there was some confusion about the function of the General Development Plan. So the General Development Plan is just that it's a plan. And the land use maps and the narrative for the land use maps, which is the chart that's on pages, I think it's 267, starts on 267 of volume two, is the narrative that goes with those maps is just planned land use going into the future. So when this plan is adopted, whether I meant there are amendments to the maps or not, there's no change to the underlying zoning. That does not occur until you actually do comprehensive rezoning, at which time the zoning maps will be amended. So the procedure in the past, at least once, was that we, there were small area plans, then there was the General Development Plan, and then there was comprehensive rezoning. And that is what is contemplated by 182103 of the code. The sequence this time is, my understanding, the GDP, which will give the planned land use, the implementation strategies for the various goals of the plan. Then the small area planning, which are now called regional plans, will occur. And then there will be the comprehensive rezoning. And I bring that up because there having a couple of questions that have come up about the precedence of the GDP and in relation to the small area plans. And we feel that in order to, because this procedure is running kind of in the opposite order than is contemplated in the code, that there may need to be a code change to say that the small area plans do in fact take some precedence over the planned land use in the GDP, or there may need to be an amendment to the GDP before comprehensive rezoning. So with that sort of background, we did attempt to answer these questions that were asked. The first question was how the council would make a change to an OPZ recommendation for planned land use. And so, as I indicated, the map for the planned land use appears in two places. It appears on page 43 of volume one and on page 120 of volume two with the narrative for changes to that map appearing beginning on page 267. So if you wanted to propose a change to the land use, you would propose changes to the maps, the two maps. And there is also a corresponding chart that goes with the map that's on page 43 of volume one, which talks about percentages of land in a particular land use. So that would also go into that amendment. And I think that we have actually drafted a couple of amendments that may have this format for you already. If, in fact, your proposed change to the map is based on a proposed change to one of the things that appears in the chart, in the narrative, beginning on page 267 of volume two, then there would be a change in the council adopted column in that map that would describe your change to the final recommendation that is also in that chart. What we are doing is, our recommendation has been not to redo those maps on page 43 and 120 every time there's one of these amendments put in, but to describe the change and perhaps use one of the layers that's available on OPZ's website to do kind of a view just of the area that's being changed. And then ultimately, when the GDP is adopted, when Plan 2040 is adopted, OPZ will go back and modify the map to match all of the changes that have been put in through amendments to the bill on one set of maps. And the chart will obviously be updated, and the page that talks about percentages of land use will be adjusted based on all of the amendments. We think that's better than having a new map just created every time because you can see that those, if you have a very small parcel, it's not even going to show up on a modified map. So we'll just end up with an overall modified map at the end of the process. Do you anything, any questions on that before I move on to question number two? I don't see any yellow flags. Okay. So does the council need to take action to adopt each OPZ recommendation? No. In other words, that last column that says council adopted, we don't feel that action needs to be taken on all of those. I'm talking, I'm sorry, about the chart that begins on page 267 of volume two. We feel that all, that what will only appear in that column is if there's an amendment to one of those particular items. If nothing appears in that column, then the final recommendation is what is adopted as part of the plan. We did make a recommendation, you'll see in our memo, that a sentence be put in on page 267 at the beginning of the chart or right before the chart that would say the changes shown in the column labeled "final recommendation" are changes adopted upon approval of this plan by the county council unless there is a change shown in the column labeled "council adopted." In that case, the final adopted change upon approval of the plan will be what is shown in the council adopted column. It's also possible either in addition or as an alternative to kind of change the title of that last column from "council adopted" to "council amendments." And that might help also be a little clearer of the intent, might clarify the intent of that column. So question three was, is it appropriate for OPZ to make recommendations for land use designations in the GDP that were not specifically requested by a landowner? And the answer to that question is yes. This is a plan under Section 531 of the Charter. It is OPZ's responsibility to make these recommendations and plan for the physical development and growth of the county, including the preparation and revision of the master plan. So even if a land use change has not been requested, there's no reason that it could not be included in the master plan moving forward. Obviously, as I stated earlier, there's no actual change to that land use until and unless it is part of the comprehensive rezoning, which will follow the small area planning, which will follow the adoption of the master development, the general development plan. Question four, what is the effect when there is a proposed land use change in the GDP that may result in a property being rezoned before comprehensive rezoning occurs? And I think what this is getting to is the notion of piecemeal rezoning. And I think that's what this was. Yes. So all administrative piecemeal rezoning, which is done for a particular property, is an administrative procedure, which is described under 1816303 of the code. There are very specific reasons why a property can be rezoned outside of comprehensive rezoning. It's usually either, it has to be either a mistake in the zoning map or that the character of the neighborhood has changed such that the zoning map should be changed. The new zoning classification has to conform with the GDP, with certain categories of the GDP. It has to be compatible between the uses of the property as reclassified and the surrounding land uses. And for property in the critical area, it has to be compatible with the critical land use designation and development standards. It's also important to note that adoption of the plan, the GDP, or even a small area plan is not evidence of mistake in the zoning map. So that the plan itself is not going to be a basis for a piecemeal rezoning. For any property that has a development application pending, I'm sorry, pending at the time of adoption of the GDP for which land use change is included in the GDP, the current land use designation of the property applies moving forward. The development will continue moving forward. And there are no issues until and if such time as zoning is changed in the property, for the property through comprehensive rezoning. And then the question is, if that development is not complete by the time of comprehensive rezoning, whether there is a vested right in the project such that it can continue to develop under the prior zoning. And the final question was, what if there's a specific administrative decision for a property and the land use designation for the property in the GDP conflicts with the administrative decision? Again, because the GDP is just a plan, there's no reason why the designation in the plan cannot be changed for the property, cannot be changed, even though piecemeal rezoning decision is pending or final. It's not affecting, as I've said, the actual zoning of the property until such time as there is comprehensive rezoning. So that was a lot, and I hope that it was helpful, and we're certainly available to answer any questions. And as you digest the memo, we're certainly available anytime by email or phone.
Thank you, Ms. Blair Claasmeier. Does anybody have a question? Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So Ms. Claasmeier, that last area that you went over as far as an administrative being either pending or final, I understand that this plan, even if it conflicts with what is happening at the administrative level or has happened, it doesn't change that or impact it. But is it fair to say if what is in Plan 2040 does conflict with administrative level decisions, we are opening the door for the zoning then to conflict because we're laying the groundwork for the zoning?
Correct. So this is the groundwork for what ultimately, well, in this case, it's laying the groundwork for the small area planning, which then lead into the comprehensive rezoning. So there's a couple, I don't know if it's bites of the apple, but there really are a couple more bites of the apple here because you get to small area planning, there may be something that occurs in small area planning that the recommendation comes out differently, and then ultimately you get to comp rezoning. And when you get to comp rezoning, that's when the actual zoning either changes or it doesn't. And in a situation, that's what I was kind of getting at with the notion of if you've got a, so if you've got a property that's currently zoned a particular way, and it's been through an administrative procedure, clearly it's been through an administrative procedure for a reason. So now if there's going to be development on that property consistent with the decision that's made at the administrative level, then the question is, does that development, if the property, if the zoning changes, are the rights vested in that project at that point? So I guess the bottom line here is, yes, it is possible that ultimately when you get to comp rezoning, you end up with a different result in zoning than you did at the administrative level. And this is the first step kind of in getting there.
From Amanda Fiedler, District Five, from a legal perspective, is that something that we should be taking into consideration? Or? I guess. Sorry, go ahead.
No, there's no legal requirement that this council recommend the ultimate land use that matches the administrative decision. If that's the, if that's the question, there's no legal requirement at this point in the planning process that that has to be consistent.
Okay, thank you. I may follow up later. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question, but okay, go ahead, Ms. Hare, and then I'll ask one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. This is maybe sort of a similar question, but I have seen some suggested land use changes where OPZ is making a recommendation that the land use change that would make it inconsistent with a current use of the property. Like, for example, there is currently medium density residential in that space, and planning and zoning is recommending that it be low density residential and is therefore creating a non-conforming use. And that that confuses the heck out of me. I don't know if that's a legal question or a question for planning and zoning, but I'm hoping someone can help explain that to me.
I would certainly let OPZs to that. I mean, they certainly are the ones who looked at all of these land use change applications and the issues that were raised at the various open houses, and their staff made certain recommendations. But again, again, it kind of just comes back to the notion that nothing changes until a couple steps down the road. And then that does become the question of whether it's a non-conforming, whether, you know, if existing development is a non-conforming use. They can certainly speak to that for you.
Okay. Maybe from a land use standpoint, it seems odd to me that we would intentionally create a non-conforming use by designating, if there is a current, currently, you know, let's say it's designated, it's currently R5, R10, whatever it might be. And there are existing homes there that meet that requirement. And then we go in and we say, you know, just kidding, it's low density residential, or it's going to be RLD or something. And we've sort of put all of those homes now in an odd place. And I'm just not sure, maybe from planning and zoning standpoint, why we would do that. Maybe I just don't understand it, or I'm missing something.
Yeah, that sounds like a land use policy planning. More than a legal question, right?
Mr. Kai Ziegler, would you like to take that one or direct to whom you will?
Hi, good evening. Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer. Yeah, I think what I need to do is it would be helpful, Councilwoman Hare, to have the example you're talking about. But I would, I would say that with all of the LUCA's and staff recommended changes, there's a wealth of information and analysis that we did on each one, and there's going to be a response or a position we've taken and a reason we took that position. So if you could provide the example, and I would ask Ms. Pompa or Carrier to respond.
Okay, certainly. I will get them for you. As a general premise, is that can you answer me from a general policy standpoint, if that's something that you would do and why, or why you think maybe I'm just misunderstanding and not something you would do?
Again, Steve Kai Ziegler, I'm Planning and Zoning Officer. I would have to see the examples you're talking about. I'm not sure that there is a general premise on this. Some jurisdictions would actively change land use basically with the intention of phasing out uses that were considered problematic in some jurisdictions. I don't believe we're doing that here. But again, each, each one of these cases, there is a backstory, a long history that there's going to be a lot of uniqueness to each one. But we did try and follow, for lack of a better term, a decision tree that we looked at one step, two step, three steps that led us to the conclusions and the recommendations we made. Again, Christina or Cindy, do you have anything you want to add on that?
Cindy Carrier, Office of Planning and Zoning. I can add just in general terms, again, it would be helpful if you had a specific example, but yeah, I mean, each one would have to be weighed on the merits of all sorts of criteria. Development policy area was, was big. And I'll give you an example that happened in the 80s when South County was downzoned to RA. You know, there's a lot of lots parcels and lots in South County that are not zoned one per 20 acres. But it was a decision made to to limit development within, within that part of the county. So that is an example of a greater policy level that was made. So that's, that's an example of why something like that could occur. But again, you know, if you have specifics, I can get back to you on, on all of those.
Awesome. That was really helpful. I will follow up with the specific instances that I'm seeing. Thank you guys so much.
Mr. Barron, did you have something to add?
No, I think Ms. Carrier covered a lot of it. I think this would help if we, we see a little bit of the examples, but I think the general question as to why we would be sort of creating or unintentionally creating a non-conforming use is the heart of the matter. And I think Ms. Carrier covered some of it, and we're happy to continue the discussion.
Okay.
And if, sorry. So we sort of skipped a step this evening. Would it make sense for me to introduce everybody who's here? Do we all know each other?
If you would like to, I will, I will certainly allow you to.
So I just, we have a whole bunch of folks here, and I think it would be good, since there's going to be questions on wide-ranging issues, we have some of our agency folks here as well beyond OPZ. So you have myself, Matt Johnston, our Environmental Policy Director, and Lori Rose, our Deputy CIO for land use here. We have our OPZ team, which you all are getting to know very well. Our Director, Mr. Kai Ziegler, Ms. Carrier, Mr. Stringer, Ms. Pompa, Mr. Will Donger, and Mr. Hughes. And then from ACDS, we have Ms. Coke from Wreckin' Parks, we have Ms. Matthews from Transportation, we have Ms. Arzu McIntosh, and from Health, we have Mr. Herb, and you've already heard from Ms. Lori Blair Claasmeier from the Office of Law. So we got a whole bunch of folks here to hopefully answer questions just like that posed by Ms. Hare. So, sorry to interrupt you.
You're forgiven. Okay, I'm going to take the turn to ask my own question, which was, as Sarah Lacy, District One, Ms. Blair Claasmeier, perhaps you're the best person to answer this. For changes or recommendations, when we're going back to that page 267 of volume two and the chart with council adopted or final recommendation, how might we handle a situation where the council does not want to adopt what the final recommendation was, but also does not want to affirmatively make a decision at that time because we'd like to essentially pass it down to the regional planning process to make a decision? Is the best way to do that to essentially leave our box blank because that would be adopting the final recommendation? So it would automatically be discussed at the region planning process? Or is there a way that we could say, we don't really like this, but I think you should talk about it? I'm trying to understand the full, sort of the full range of what we can do in that column. Yes, please, answer me.
I have my hand raised. Lori Blair Claasmeier, Deputy County Attorney. Haven't done that in a lot of years. So we feel that if that, that column is blank, that you're actually adopting the final recommendation. So if the feeling is you don't want to, you don't agree with the final recommendation, but you don't want to say something different, that there would be an amendment to put in that column, this decision is deferred to small area or region and to, after region planning or something like that. In other words, if that column is blank, it's the final recommendation is what it defaults back to. So that's why we discussed, I discussed kind of maybe putting a sentence or two in that says that that's what that means, but that is we don't think you have to go through a couple hundred times and say yes or no, you know, or say yes. Only the amendments would be in that, show up in that column.
Thank you. We'll go to Ms. Fiedler.
There we go. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So I'm going to piggyback on the question that Councilwoman Hare had. If, understanding that changing the land use in an already developed area may have been done to prevent future development. If that is done to an existing developed area, say you go from medium density to low density, does that also have the unintended consequence, or could it have the unintended consequence of adding additional criteria or preventing specific additions or enhancements to develop properties with that change? That was a question that came up on the Broadneck Peninsula with an SR that has since been removed, but they were a, I believe, an R2, and there was a recommendation to go to RLD, and there was concern that they wouldn't be able to put sheds in their yards or add a porch to their house. Is that a very real concern, or is that not accurate?
Ms. Pompa or Ms. Carrier, you can tackle that one.
Yeah, sure. Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So remember that we're talking about land use and we're not talking about zoning. Although the next step in the region plan process, if we do downgrade a land use classification would potentially be a downzoning. Ms. Carrier may be able to add some more information about how many areas we may have done a reduction in the land use classification. Now, whether or not a shed could be built on a, on a property or not, that is something that I don't think anybody on this call is going to be able to tell you because we don't work in development, although I saw Mr. Kai Ziegler's hands go up.
Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer. Before Cindy responds with her portion, what I would say is a change in land use designation by itself does not create a nonconformity because it's not zoning. But as Ms. Pompa said, assuming through the region planning process, the zoning marries up with the new land use designation, it does have the potential to create a nonconforming use or nonconforming structures. And it would be, you know, again, examples are important, but it would have the potential to create nonconformities, and it would be more difficult for that property to for that property in or to um, under certain conditions to expand or do certain things because they would now be a non-conforming use and there's limitations as to what you can do as a non-conforming use in the zoning code. So it, it, at the zoning point, it could have the potential to create the non-conforming issue.
Um, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Mr. Kai Ziegler, thank you for that. And that, that is how I understood it. So there's, there's two parts to, to the, the land use change as I'm understanding it. You set up the land use. Um, but then there's the zoning that comes after and my concern is the folks that are working on the regional zones don't understand down zoning beyond just down zoning. There's implications for existing property owners where currently they may be able to do something that if a zone is changed by regional zoning and um, or the regional plans and then comp zoning, they're going to be changing current property owners' abilities to do things that they can currently do right now, but will not be able to do. If we're leading them, we're literally leading. That's what I think of land use changes. You're leading people down a path to get to a zoning change. Um, so that, that's my concern and I don't really think it's a question you've answered my question. So, thank you.
Can I, can I, can I add one thing, Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer? One of the most important things to remember though is through comprehensive rezoning, the county council retains all of the power to make those decisions. Um, I can tell you with staff, we don't have a, I'm going to say a philosophy or a policy objective to um, use the region planning process to downzone a lot of land. That, that's not what our objective is. Um, so I, I don't think you would see the staff leading a region planning CAC, you know, group into that direction. And, and in point of fact that if the CAC were moving in a direction to make decisions that, recommendations to the council that would be inconsistent with the land use map or the planning processes, that's going to come out in a very transparent uh, way in front of the county council when you're deciding how individual properties should be zoned.
Thank you, Mr. Kai Ziegler. Ms. Pickard, you have a question?
I just wanted to, uh, Allison Pickard D two, I just wanted to add on to that conversation because o- obviously I'm not looking at a specific um, staff recommendation or a change, but if a property is already developed, why, why would there be a staff recommendation to move it? Change the land, underlying land use, different land that's already developed? That doesn't make sense to me. Am I missing something?
Christina Pompa with OPZ. Um, Councilwoman Picker, generally at the land use level, we're looking at larger areas. We're not necessarily looking property by property. So um, you're, you are looking generally at larger areas of land and sometimes you can have a mix of smaller properties and larger properties.
Um, Steve Kai Ziegler, uh, again, I think what, based on this conversation that I want to do with staff is we want to compile the land use um, change recommendations that if zoned that way would have, uh, I'm going to say, uh, the property owner may perceive it as a negative impact. Um, we can share with you too, the criteria we use to look at it. Um, Ms. Pompa made a very good point. Uh, land use designation in a GDP is, is really not as fine as zoning. Zoning is, is laid on top of individual pieces of property. If you do it right, you follow the property lines. But land use will be a much uh, more granular. I- it's uh, not near as fine as a zoning line and, and there may be properties that were included that we have to relook at as a part of this process. We're happy to do that. I, I could see that, you know, the, 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 how the conversation's going and we're going to need to share more information about where we think that could occur. We'll figure out those examples. If you have them, please send. Um, but we'll take a, another look at it.
Okay, can I, Madam Chair, can I just follow up with that?
Yes, go ahead.
So I, I have seen, I have seen in the, the back pages of volume two where a property, the underlying zoning is commercial, over time it's been developed, let's say high density R twenty-two. So there's a recommendation to now go back and make the underlying land use designation, high density residential to match how that property's been developed. I haven't come across the other way where you know, a neighborhood is developed R five and they're, the land use designation is now being changed, but I haven't, I haven't come across that myself. I'd come across the other, the other um, item. So um, I think when we get into the specific changes, that's probably the best way to go. We find weird things.
Uh, Cindy Carrier, Office of Planning and Zoning. May I add to that?
Yes, please.
Um, so each one of these, as I said before, is a sort of a case by case review. Um, and with the Whitehall Beach and Burley communities, um, they had that concern and they were confusing land use and zoning, but we did um confer with our office, our zoning office and um, in that particular case, they would be grandfathered. So they would be able to do, you know, you know, add a shed, a deck, you know, there, they would not um the, the requirements for them would be the same as they were developed at, which is basically the R two or five zoning. So, uh, you know, again, it's each one of these, we're looking at it at a um, on a case by case basis. So if you have some that are you know, questionable, you know, we would, we'd take a look at that, but we, you know, are in partnership with our zoning office on asking these um, very questions.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Ms. Carrier, to that point, would that apply? Because if that, if a grandfathering would apply to all existing properties, that would address my concern. Um, so do, do you all have a way of going through and identifying the staff recommendations that could potentially downzone an already developed property and give them the grandfathering language in this document?
Uh, Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer, not through this document. It's a plan. Um, I think the first part, we, we, we should probably take this a step at a time and let's identify if there are any of these instances, like I said, if you have examples. Um, and we can have a, a, a more informed discussion, but the plan by itself isn't going to grandfather anything. That would occur through code changes through the region planning processes probably. But I, I'd like to know, I mean, I'm, I'm curious if, if we have placed land use designations on properties that in the future have the potential to cause a zoning change that would, you know, materially affect the property's rights. I, I want to, I want to double check that. Um, because there are implications to all these things that we're doing.
Um, Ms. Hair, do you, yep, there's your hand. I see.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hair, District Seven. This is maybe sort of along the same lines. Um, if an area in the plan is under multiple designations, is there a hierarchy, an order of precedence that we're looking at? Because I can tell you, for example, on uh, the Mayo Peninsula, there are designations that overlap. It, it can be both um, a, you know, peninsula designation, but also a priority funding area. And the two can mean different things. How are we reconciling that?
Ms. Pompa, maybe you want to take the first stab or, or Ms. Carrier?
Um, Ms. Hair, could you uh, repeat that question for me, please? Christina Pompa with OPZ.
Sure. So it looks to me, and I, I imagine this happens in other people's districts as well, but I was looking at it from a District Seven standpoint. There are places where multiple designations in the plan are layered on top of each other so that it, particular properties would be subject to multiple um, designations in the plan. And the, the one that immediately jumps to my mind is on the Mayo Peninsula. There are properties that are both within the peninsula designation, but then also within the priority funding designation. And those two things can have conflicting policy goals within the plan itself. So I'm trying to figure out whether there is a hierarchy or an order of precedence uh, that we are to be looking at so that something in a peninsula area, even if it's in a PFA peninsula is the higher priori, higher priority or whether the PFA is the higher priority. How are we reconciling those differences?
Okay, thank, thank you for um, restating the question. Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. We got a similar question on Tuesday. Um, from Councilwoman Fiedler. She was asking about the planned land use map, the growth tiers map and the communities of opportunity map. And again, this is a general development plan and many of these maps are, you know, they are policy level maps. So the priority funding area map, which is the PFA, the areas that are in priority funding areas, if the county wanted to go after infrastructure that, that needed state funding, it basically needs to be in a priority funding area in order to do that. We would evaluate, I think, if we were looking at an infrastructure project in a priority funding area that's also in a peninsula area, you have to weigh all of the issues to decide if it is the right location. And sometimes the peninsula area might prevail and that would not be selected as the right location, or in other cases, it could be the right location. And I think you have a similar situation since we are talking about, we did start out this evening talking about questions that we hadn't answered on Tuesday. I'd like to go ahead and slide into um, Ms. Fiedler's quest, question. Um, same, same kind of issue. You know, what happens if you have a community of opportunity, but your planned land use doesn't really comport with that? Well, when you're looking at communities of opportunity, which generally are the areas that we want to put affordable housing and where affordable housing developers can get funding, then they are looking for high density residential zoning. So if in fact you don't have high density land use, which would then turn into higher density zoning later, um, that may not be the appropriate place to do an affordable housing project. So eh, eh, we've also gotten this question as it relates to climate change and sea level rise. Same thing with the communities of opportunity in some areas in South County. We have these conflicts. Actually, it's almost like they're built into the, to the document. And they all have to be ca- taken on a case by case basis in the future when, when we're looking at things that are going to happen on property.
Okay, thank you. That was super helpful. So essentially what I understand is every individual issue that may flow from this, it's really kind of a totality of the circumstances type of evaluation and it's very facts dependent.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Who would like to ask a question next? Ms. Pickard.
Well, I'll keep going with the affordable housing issue. Um, if, if I may, um, I do have a couple of amendments that I'll, I'd love to discuss with the group at some point, but um, since we're talking about priority funding areas and communities of opportunity, do we feel the, the land use map um is going to net us any affordable housing in the future? There's not, we don't, I think high density residential is probably the, the, we have the least amount of designated acres in this county. Um, and when you pile on all those other policy goals, um, does the administration feel we're going to be able to, to, to address affordable housing with this land use map?
Oh, maybe I'll take a stab at that. Um, Pete Baron with the administration. I mean, that's, that's exactly the right question to be asking Councilwoman Picker. The um, there are a number of very important complicated policies that are, are layered on top of each other in this in, in this um, exercise of a general development plan. And eh, the administration is committed to, to working to find opportunities for uh, affordable housing. Uh, we've brought forward a couple of bills before this council. We, we plan to bring on a, a couple of more. Um, the, the, the answer, I think, to that question is is it has to be an ongoing discussion and there is not um uh, uh, there is a limited amount of land. Land in this county is expensive, which does make it hard for affordable housing developers to um to bring forward projects and we have a massive need here. So the, the question you posed, uh, will this um, plan address it? Um, I, I don't, I, I don't think that's possible to, to meet. The, the, if the goal is to, to completely erase our affordability problem, we're going to need a lot more money and we're going to need a lot more than one general development plan. Um, but uh, I think there's definitely room for us to discuss if this map is providing the right um, the right underlying structure to begin or to to take a bite out of, of the issue and Ms. Pompa or, or Ms. Carrier.
Yeah.
And Ms. Rhodes.
Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use. Um, I want to add on to what uh, Mr. Baron has stated. Uh, if you look at the workforce housing bill, that expanded opportunities for workforce housing in R five, which isn't typically a corresponding high density land use. So it all depends on the type of legislative tools that are put forth to provide those opportunities for affordable housing. So we, we would be looking at the zoning tools and not necessarily the land use map, which is part of the Plan Twenty Forty. They do mention uh, opportunities to provide for affordable housing, but it's the zoning tools that really gets down to into the weeds of where that's going to be. And that's something that the administration is studying right now.
Um, Sarah Lacy, District One. I actually was thinking with this specific debate, I want to provide two property examples that seems to me are uh, very much in tension and that is if you look at Luca twenty-eight and SR eleven, both of which are in my district in Glen Burnie. I don't know what um, region plan that works out to. Um, but as I looked at those and thought about affordable housing and um, you know, other important economic goals that we have, it seems to me that I would flip the two recommendations on those plans. And I mean, we don't, we don't need to take up the time to study them right now. I think I'll bring them up again, but I think they're a good example of this tension that we're talking about. Uh, be happy to give details if anyone wanted to, but mostly I just wanted to note that so we can have examples for discussion. Um, Ms. Hair?
So actually my question is on a different topic. So if, if Councilwoman Picker had a question on topic, I'll, I'll wait.
I'll just, I'll just, I'll just add to that. Uh, I appreciate the, the the commentary tonight and I think as, as this council wades through the, the next uh, the, the GDP through these these coming meetings, I think we do need to look closely at the strategies that get to then lead to potential policy and legislative tools that will lead us to affordability in this county because there are some strategies and we all know we have conflicting strategies in the GDP that, that um, remove affordability at times too. So we have a lot of work to do and I look forward to um uh, a vigorous debate about all of it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lacy, this is Christina Pompa with OPZ. Could I just add one more thing on the affordable housing discussion? Thank, thank you very much. Um, I know that we focus very much on high density residential as the land use that would be appropriate to um, accommodate affordable housing. But I do want to point out that the town center land use also can accommodate high density residential and then mixed use may also be able to. So, and we did a complete analysis looking at um what was, what what needed to be accommodated over the life of this plan and we believe that the land use uh, in the planned land use map does, does what it needs to do as far as providing for adequate housing.
Thank you, Ms. Pompa. Uh, Mr. Ziegler?
Uh, yes, Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer. So there's a, there's a couple of things that come to my mind in this discussion. Yes, Steve Kaisigler, Planning and Zoning Officer. So there's a, there's a couple of things that come to my mind in this discussion. One, I will share with you that I think within OPZ, we acknowledge that the zoning tools that we have now. Really aren't sufficient or, or aligned in a way that lets us be as successful as we could with affordable housing. I agree with Ms. Pampa. We do have sub- substantial, I'm gonna say, land holdings where affordable housing could occur. In a variety of places in the county. Um, as I said, the zoning tools really aren't there. The other thing, the, the, the one thing we haven't mentioned yet, there is one gigantic obstacle to doing. Affordable housing in this county and we haven't touched on it yet in this discussion, but it's the fact that. So many places where affordable housing would work, meaning the zoning level of intensity. The, eh, the policy objectives are met are defeated by the simple fact that we have school APF. That shuts down at any given point in time in the county, very, very large percentages of a, of, of the county to residential development. If we're really serious about affordable housing and workforce housing. We are probably going to need to find a way to exempt those uses. From school APF, which creates other issues within the school board and parents. But if I, that's the main reason we're struggling with it now.
Thank you. Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I have a question about a definition that maybe I'm just struggling to find. Um, and so maybe this is a little, a little in the weeds, so to speak. But, um, I had received a couple of questions on it from various constituents. In policy NE 1.1C. We use the term ephemeral stream. And when I look that up. It seems to me that it could encompass almost anything that catches water when it rains. And so my question was, we're putting in here that there's a policy goal for a, um, a 25-foot. Uh, prohibition on any kind of disturbance. Is it the intention of OPZ to include things like stormwater ditches as part of that definition? Or is there something else that you intended to mean by that definition or by that term?
Is this maybe, uh, Pete Barron? Is this maybe a, a Matt Johnston question first?
Well, actually, can I take it first? Can I take it first and then give it to Matt?
Sure.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Uh, Councilwoman Hare, I just want to point out to you that we do have an appendix. Glossary starting on page 245 of volume two, which are, uh, contain definitions. And ephemeral stream is on page 250, a stream that flows only briefly during and following a period of rainfall. In the immediate locality. Um, and with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Matt Johnson.
Yeah, think, think, uh, Matt Johnson, Environmental Policy Director. Thanks, Ms. Pampa, and thanks, uh, Councilwoman Hare. Great question. So there are other municipalities and states that do regulate or at least encourage that there's no disturbance of ephemeral streams. And in most of those places, including in Montgomery County, they are very, uh, specific that this cannot be man-made.
Okay.
And, and I think that this is our intention too. If there were to be follow-on leg- legislation in the future, um, on this piece, then we would want to. Make it so that these headwater areas, these ephemeral streams could be the receiving areas for stormwater practices. That's actually where you want to, to convey your water to, as opposed to conveying into the open, um, stream channel. And causing erosion downstream. So there, so this would actually be. You, you know, a, a 25-foot, um, barrier to, to building everything, but the stormwater conveyance systems. That would be a very logical thing to place in that area.
But you intended to mean, eh, you're not intending there to be a 25-foot buffer from the stormwater ditches. You're, so you are intending this to be a natural stream, not a man-made item?
Absolutely. Man-made streams and ditches would be exempt from this policy if there was ever follow-on legislation on this policy.
Thank you. That's helpful.
I'll add one more thing and then I say a couple of hands up. Um, I know that this was a, um, Citizens Environmental Commission, um, recommendation to the county executive. And it was actually well-received by a lot of the staff who had been trying to push this in previous general development plans. Because they see this as a whole, uh, uh, stream approach to protect our headwater streams as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I see Ms. Fiedler and Ms. Pickard have flags up, but I didn't see who put theirs up first. Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Councilwoman Pickard. So I have a, a practical question on that. So let's say I'm a homeowner who li- has a backyard that is. Um, has some kind of slope, eh, not necessarily a steep slope, and there's a heavy pouring rain. And I have water from either the road or somewhere that has come through my yard, me, hairy homeowner. It's a project that I want to tackle one day. Maybe it's a French drain, maybe it's something. But my priority project is a porch or a patio in my backyard. And I need a permit for that. And somebody comes out and with this ephemeral stream language. Could an inspector or a builder say, oh, you've just triggered hairy homeowner via ephemeral stream? Red flag. When it's something that they've had going through their backyard forever and it's just, it only happens when it rains. Would that be a trigger?
Councilwoman Fiedler, uh, Matt Johnson again, Environmental Policy Director. That is an excellent question and it's a good one to ask for any environmental feature, call them natural features. Those are listed in Article 17 and Article 17 only pertains to development and subdivision. So to, uh, so for it to be applicable in the, eh, to an existing homeowner, an existing lot. Who's just putting in a porch or something like that, you'd have to pass a bill that would impact Article 17. And then go and impact Article 16, which is all about standard grading permits and grading permits. So you, you would actually have to pass a more comprehensive bill. And, um, I, I will tell you as I was, uh, the one who received the recommendation from the Citizens Environmental Commission. That's certainly not the intent of this line item in here. It's to put it in Article 17 so that as part of the larger development process. These ephemeral streams are mapped at the beginning of the process and are protected and our areas where stormwater systems are cited. As, in the large development process, not the porch, uh, grading process.
Ms. Fiedler, do you wanna follow up?
I do. It's a follow-up question to that. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So if it's only related to development or subdivision. Is it clear when someone goes out to an undeveloped site, which eh, would be those circumstances? Is it clear when you see an ephemeral stream? Does it, does it only exist, well, by definition, it only exists when it rains. So I would think that someone would have to have eyes on the ground during a rain. Or is there another way to identify?
Very good question. So obviously in the field, again, Matt Johnson, Environmental Policy Director. In the field, it takes a, a very highly-trained, um, um, specialist to identify these areas. Based on wet soils or hu- um, or the kinds of plants that are growing there, any scour they see on the ground from last rainfall. But we are lucky in this county to have a great Bureau of Watershed Protection and Restoration. Who is developing maps that will just be flags. They are not regulatory maps in any, in any way or, or, or fashion. But they tell us where we expect water to, uh, congregate all across the landscape in the county. And those maps can kinda show you, okay, before I go out in the field, I'm sitting in front of my desk in OPZ. Before I go out in the field, let me flip on this, where should, should I expect to find water? Based on, um, satellite elevation data. Okay, these are the areas I'm gonna go check as a qualified professional to see if it looks like an ephemeral stream or not. I hope that answers the question. It would take a qualified professional to be in the field to, to answer it fully.
And Amanda Fiedler, District Five, a follow-up to that. So does the watershed, uh, group currently, they don't currently. Do this during the subdivision process or development?
No, currently it is intermittent and perennial streams that are regulated in Article 17.
Amanda Fiedler, District Five, I'll yield to Councilwoman Pickard if she still had a follow-up question, but I had one more if, if I've accidentally asked hers.
No, I'm, I'm gonna switch gears slightly. So if you wanna keep talking about streams, have at it.
Yeah, thank you. Just one more question. So I'm just trying to understand this term and where it is, because it's new, I think, to all of us. So it's my understanding that the Army Corps of Engine- Engineers. Kind of let go of their control over, um, ephemeral streams in the, the newest, um. Iteration of the Clean Water Act. Do we know if, if that's first accurate and if it is, what the reason was?
Matt Johnson, Environmental Policy Director. That's gonna take our Office of Law and I looking into where that stands right now. The clean water rules, they came up. They went back down. We have a new administration, but we can check into the clean water rules for you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's all. Anyone else on ephemeral streams at the moment? Seeing none, Ms. Pickard. Oh, Ms. Schuet, darn. Go ahead. You're muted. Ms. Schuet, you are muted.
Let me just start again. I'm Linda Schuet. I'm Legislative Counsel for the County Council and I think this question is for Matt. If the county does map the ephemeral streams, does that mean that a purchaser could rely on those maps? So that if that particular property doesn't show up in the map, then there's no ephemeral stream?
I think, Matt Johnson, Environmental Policy Director, I think I'm going to kick this one over to Planning and Zoning. Since they own the maps and the development review process. So I will say that I don't believe that our maps are regulatory in nature. They're used to help our review and help us in the field and I'll, I'll kick it over to Steve Kaisigler to answer that fully.
Steve Kaisigler, Planning and Zoning Officer. Uh, Mr. Johnson's, uh, very correct. The resourcing, the maps that we have and use are guides. As in some instances, they're extremely accurate. In other cases, they're, uh, moderately accurate, but they can only be used as a guide. If a property owner were interested in, um, uh, purchasing a piece of property and wanted to know exactly what was on the land. They would need to hi- hire a qualified person to go out and delineate those environmental features. Ideally, they would share that information with us to confirm that we agree with that information. But that's really the only accurate way to determine what exists on an individual piece of property.
Thank you.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Allison Pickard, D2. I, eh, this sounds, seems like a good time to introduce the, the council to an amendment regarding implementation strategies. That I'll be bringing forward on, um, Monday night. It is drafted. Um, and it is the product of, um, if Ms. Schultz can pull it up if, if need be. It's been shared with the council and I would, I would request that, uh, council members reach out. If they have, um, concerns, but I, I'll, I'll go ahead and introduce it as such. This is the product of, of, uh, some, some good give and take with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Ms. Pampa and Ms. Carrier were very generous with their time with me last week, uh, regarding, uh, numerous questions I had. And I, I really, eh, the, as I was reviewing the Plan 2040. And as we got into the implementation, uh, pages, um, in volume one, which I believe started on page 72. I, I was just, I was just concerned that it wasn't clear. That while this general development plan is laying out goals and policy objectives. The matrix that we'll see in those back pages, um, lists hundreds of strategies. Some that are very specific and some like our 25-foot buffer to ephemeral streams and some that are less specific. There's a lot of great stuff in those strategies, but this council. This amendment would add language into those implementation pages that clearly. Defines a strategy as something that is still up for further consideration and review. So that this council is not, as we work through, um, this document and this, um, Plan 2040. We're not tying our hands legislatively to hundreds of strategies that we haven't had the, really the opportunity. To digest and understand fully. So that, that's, um, my original language was a, a little, maybe a little brief and maybe a little curt. But I think together we've, we've gotten to some really good language. That brings in some additional paragraphs so that we all understand the council's role. And land use and changes to the code going forward and things like that. So I don't know if anybody has any questions. I do really appreciate, uh. Ms. Pampa and Ms. Carrier's time, uh, with me last week to get to this place. But I hope, um, you know, when it's introduced next Monday, it, it'll be a, we can have some time with it today. I hope you can take an opportunity to read through it and if we see anything that needs to be tweaked, we can make that happen before it's introduced on Monday. So I don't know if anybody has any questions, but I just wanted to bring it up.
Would the administration like to comment?
Eh, absolutely. Um, uh, thank you, uh, Madam Chair, Pete Barron with the administration. I'll just echo, um, some of the things that Ms. Pickard said, uh, and sort of add that. You know, I think what this amendment is doing is, is bringing some clarity to how the administration viewed the, the plan from the very beginning. And, and this amendment, um, and Ms. Carrier and Ms. Pampa. Deserve a, a tremendous amount of, of credit, um, for, for helping to provide some of the subject matter expertise. To bring, uh, Councilwoman Pickard's vision, um, uh, to the. To, to the words on the page. And, uh, this is a perfect example of, of the kinda collaborative work that has, um. Is gonna yield a, a much better Plan 2040 and, and we wanna thank, uh, Councilwoman Pickard. And, um, eh, Ms. Pampa and Ms. Carrier, feel free to add, uh, any on the substance. But I'll just say that the administration supports this amendment.
Christina Pampa with OPZ. Um, I don't have, uh, much to add. I do think that this amendment, a proposed amendment is great language. It does improve the plan. It clarifies a lot of questions that we've received on implementation. And I also wanna give the credit to Cindy Carrier because she did the original drafting. So, thank you.
Okay, so at this time, I think it would be appropriate, either we can continue that conversation on that amendment. If anyone has other questions or comments. Um, and also move to the more specific part of our agenda. Where, um, you know, it's like Ms. Pickard broke spades. So anybody who wants to talk about your specific amendment. You know, just feel free to raise your flag or say, Madam Chair, and, um, we can put them up on the screen. Don't feel like you have to bring it up if you don't want to, but the opportunity is available. Okay, um, Ms. Fiedler first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I do have an amendment regarding the appointment to the SACs that was sent around earlier today. And I will pause to give staff an opportunity to put it up on the screen. Thank you. So the way that the code is written, um, the county executive appoints all members to the SAC. Right now, code indicates or, or states that we have to have a minimum of nine. So keeping that in mind and hearing from community members. That there should be more of a collaborative effort, collaborative effort to appoint members to the SAC. This amendment gives the county executive the majority of those appointments if we're basing it off of the minimum. And that would be five members. And then the remaining four, which would make up that minimum of nine, would be split evenly among council members. If there are two representing a region. Um, and if there is only one council member representing a region, which, um, I think may occur in one circumstance. That council member would appoint four. um, that council member would appoint four. Um, and also, um, if there are two, you, you would divide the appointments as best you could evenly. Um, and I'm happy to discuss or even um, alter slightly. But this is just to really bring more collaboration in the appointment. We know our districts better than anyone. We know the people in them. And uh, I think it's important that both the County Executive and Council make appointments in that um, SAC group. So.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Barron.
Uh, thank you, and, and thank you, Councilwoman Feeder for, for bringing this forward. Um, uh, the administration is, is supportive of the concept of, of finding some way to make it clear that there's gotta be a collaborative process in, in appointing these um, Stakeholder Advisory Committees. And um, we have actually been in, in sort of lengthy conversation with um, Councilman Pruski on, on a similar uh, approach to this. And, and I think um, putting all our heads together, I'm confident that we're gonna get to a solution that we can all agree to. I think we have a couple of maybe sort of technical issues with your approach that we'd be happy to, to discuss about how we can make this work. I think um, this is a conversation that I've had, not just with Councilman Pruski, but um, probably with a majority of, of the council, um, to, to make sure that it's clear in the plan. Uh, the, that the appointment to these committees has to be a collaborative effort. Um, we, we truly believe in that, and, and I think we can get there. Maybe not quite with the words on the page with yours, but um, I'm confident that we're gonna get there, that it's gonna be something that uh, achieves the goal that you're, you're seeking to achieve here.
Mr. Pruski.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, Andrew Pruski, District Four. Um, I did speak with Councilwoman Feeder, and I have talked to Mr. Barron. Um, I, I do wanna speak here about a couple of things. Um, and I brought this up. Uh, this is a collaborative effort, but one of the things I noticed uh, in one of the pages is to make sure we're inclusive, but as many people as possible. For instance, uh, I know in my area, military and Department of Defense personnel would be a perfect person to sit on the committee. Well, of course, planning and zoning might not have heard that in the public thing, but now that's maybe something that we can add. Or a PTA person or someone else. So I think that if anything, we need to expand who could sit or the categories. Uh, so that is something I'm working on personally. I don't have an amendment tonight, but I've been discussing. The second piece that I wanna highlight, um, and this is a little history uh, for the, to you, and I apologize, this is my social studies teacher coming out. If you watch the uh, small area plans, there was about twenty-five people on that prior. That's a lot of people. And, and I think anybody in planning and zoning would agree with me, that's too many. Um, and so I think we also should maybe look at a minimum and maximum number. Uh, I personally think maybe nine is a little bit too small. I'm just gonna be honest with you. I think fifteen max maybe is a good number. Again, we could talk about this. I don't, uh, you know, I, again, I don't wanna throw a dart at the dartboard and say, well, that's what it should be, but we should really uh, work through this, right? About making sure that we get as many people as possible, collaborate with the County Executive, and make sure that folks uh, truly represent uh, the areas and communities, because all our areas are different. But also they're the same too, right? We want people to make sure that they're collaborative uh, in the sense. So um, what I did ask, and, and for all transparency, Mr. Barron, you know, working on the process, right? We gotta get through this plan. How are people submitting applications or their resume for this? How are they, what's the timeline? There's a lot of things that gotta be figured out, right? We're, we're all trying to get all this done, but as they think through this, uh, maybe as we do this amendment, that's probably the best way to sort through. But I certainly think, um, Ms. Feeder, thank you again for bringing this up. We, we gotta do something, right? There has to be some kind of additional pieces added where we can add that wide range of, of folks uh, for diversity for the community. But also um, make sure it's not uh, too limited, right? Uh, and, and, and again, I, I, I talked to planning and zoning, and, and I'm gonna be fair with them on this. There may be some areas where you, you're lucky to get nine people. I don't, I don't mean that in a negative way. I'm just gonna be honest. They're just not as engaged, right? But I can tell you for my area, uh, particularly for certain communities, um, I think you're gonna have fifty people applying. The problem is gonna be sorting through them. So um, again, I, I think we should continue to talk about this, find a way, but we gotta find a path forward to make sure we're inclusive uh, to bring in folks. And as I said, uh, additional representatives. So, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Barron.
Um, I just to echo uh, one point Councilman Pruski just made. Um, the process of selection is, is gonna be very important to achieve that kind of uh, diversity of background, experience, um, uh, knowledge, a- and, and to make sure that the folks have the time to commit. I mean, it's important to remember, um, these are volunteer boards, and, and that can make it a little difficult for, for some folks to, to meet, and folks will need to understand from the very beginning what's involved in, in, in joining one of these uh, groups or applying to be a part of it. And so very interested in, in continuing this dialogue on how we craft uh, the right words on the page to make sure that we, we are, are appropriately setting the, the kind of collaborative process that I think we're all seeking to achieve here. And, and one last point, just 'cause um, a, a very talented staffer uh, provided me with a list uh, today of, of the regions and, and overlaying um, council districts. There are, are, as I think of, we understand, maybe two uh, that have only one council member. Every other uh, uh, regional area has at least two, several with three. Um, so it just, it, it complicates that process about how we're gonna do, uh, make sure that everybody's voice is, is heard. I think we'll, we'll get there, and, and uh, Councilwoman Feeder and Councilman Pruski and every member of this council, uh, we're, we're obviously available at, at any time to, to have a discussion on crafting and shaping this um, to achieve the, the goal. I think we're all pretty much in the same place. The devil's just gonna be in the details.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Like my colleagues, I, I, I actually like the idea of the council having a role in um, by resolution in the formation of the different regional planning groups. I, I don't know the right way to do it. I will say that if we, as a council, uh, uh, create a process that involves a resolution, it, it needs a vote of four. So it, it by its very nature has to be collaborative. It's, it, I mean, you can't necessarily rely on, and we do have regions that stretch. I know my district, my council manic district has a piece in, it's mostly in Region Three, but it has a piece of Region One and Four. I don't know, there's lots of little pieces. But we all neighbor each other too, and this council, um, just like the school board, does need to be concerned as, as a whole body arou- about the entire county. So figuring out, I don't know how we get there, but I, I do want to, I do wanna get there. Um, I'm gonna be honest, uh, Ms. Feeder, I haven't, I haven't read your amendment word for word yet. But um, I do want, I do want, uh, I do want the council to have a hand in putting people on the um, the region planning groups. I, I, I just gotta figure out the best way to do it. But no one council member can just decide, obviously, that's not the way we work. We always need a vote of four, right? So I think that very, our, our very makeup will make it be collaborative. And we'll have to make sure that those who we appoint will be representative of, of the community in, in a variety of ways. So hopefully we can um, sort through this and, and figure it out. Thanks.
Mr. Pruski and then Ms. Herr.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually got a message um, from Ms. Schultz that, that my one amendment that I was working on is available. I don't know if she can post it. It was the one about adding language regarding the uh, who else can kinda serve on the Stakeholder Committee. Um, I know it's launching now. I'll give it a second here. So just a couple additions. Again, these are considerations. Uh, this is a draft amendment, obviously, for work session. But if you can recall before, we had the long-term resident, ten years, and then the resident less than ten years. Um, some of the other ones that we were looking at is obviously HOA or Civic Association. Uh, Military Department of Defense or other relevant government agency or contractor. Um, for those of you that um, that don't recall, but particularly when, when BRAC and then some of the other decisions that are happening in Fort Meade and other areas, those are the folks that are actually bringing people here. Wouldn't it be nice to have them on the committee as a representative? Because they kinda know the need. So again, just uh, uh, of other piece. And also, um, an affordable housing advocate. Um, you know, we certainly need someone if we're talking, Ms. Pickard brought up earlier about policy. Uh, wouldn't it be great to have somebody from that area, obviously, have that? And then also, I think, uh, we often forget this, and, and Stephen Kaiszegler brought this up earlier. A lot of this development decisions impact schools. What, what do we always hear from the school board? Well, there's not enough capacity over here or there. Why are we then maybe looking at a member of a school organization, the PTA, uh, or, or some other group that is involved uh, with these decisions? So again, I look at this as a broader perspective, um, and being inclusive. Because to me, land use decisions are community-based, right? When we talk about the community, we have a whole bunch of people. It's not this group, this special just group, that group, this person. You know, it's, it's kind of everyone. So again, uh, I'm open for consideration for further changes, but this is something that I think, I hope that you would consider, and I'll end it there.
Ms. Herr.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Herr, District Seven. I, I was just gonna say, I think um, Councilman Pruski's idea of a range seems like a really good idea. I'm in somewhat of the same boat as Councilwoman Pickard in that District Seven has four regions within it. Um, and so there's a lot of moving pieces there. And, and you know, some of the regions in terms of land area are, are much larger than others. And so nine certainly, I think, will not be sufficient for many of these regions. Um, but I'm also cognizant that too many cooks in the kitchen, nothing gets done. So um, I, I think that range and, and that way people can look at it. I just wanted to say that I, I support that. When we're ready to move to a different topic, I have an amendment to share as well, or two amendments to share as well, but I, I'm not sure if we're still on this.
I guess, um, thank you, Ms. Herr. Before you do that, I do wanna offer a comment, which is, um, I don't think I have as many regions as you do, but I do have more highly populated areas and small communities. They're, they're next to each other. They're small in area. They are very dense in population, and they see themselves as distinct communities. And one thing about the, the way this process seems like it's going to go, I, I get concerned that the folks in each of these communities may not feel they have enough stakeholders on the committee for the decisions that are going to be directly about their communities. I think everyone can, can agree, if you're going to be on this committee, that you are, you know, looking at each, each part of the region that you're serving for. Um, but if you feel like you didn't get enough input in your community, there's still going to be a problem with buy-in with, you know, any kind of big changes. So I, I don't have a specific suggestion at this time for addressing it, but it's been something I've been puzzling over, and I think we need to have a flexibility to address that somehow and to, or to accommodate um, the different kinds of communities that we have. Um, does anyone have any other comment on the same topic before we change topics? Seeing no hands, flags. Okay, um, go ahead, Ms. Herr.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Herr, District Seven. Um, so to, to, I think my amendments have been shared so far with the council and the administration. The two that I wanna talk about this evening are um, sort of broad. They're very short. Um, the first one is about this idea of off-road pedestrian and bicycle recreational trails. Uh, there's a map on page one hundred and ninety-nine in volume two of the GDP that shows our existing network. Um, and we have some amazing trails in the county. I mean, it's a really cool amenity. Um, but there's a, a large portion of the county that doesn't get them, uh, and hasn't yet. And if you look at the move in a rundle, um, transportation plans, they, it doubles down on the existing area where there are already trails and sort of expanding that network, and it doesn't really include much of anything. Um, you know, south of Annapolis, really. There's, there's really no plan for additional trails south of Annapolis. Um, so while the GDP says that they want a county-wide network of trails, anytime I've ever seen that in the past with move in a rundle and things like that, it always gets interpreted to mean expansion of the existing trails that there are. And so I, I would like to make it very clear that it, the countywide includes the southern half of the county um, when we're looking at trails. And so not to take away anything from the plans to expand in the northern half of the county um, and in the western part of the county and things like that, but that we really would like to have a system of trails that goes tip to tip. Uh, you know, east to west, north to, north to south, connecting all of the parts. I'm, I'm certainly amenable to changes in language. I, um, happy to, to finesse any of this, but I'm, I'm hoping everyone will support that, because I'd like to see this move forward, um, you know, in future years uh, with, with budget and, and other kinds of things. And I think the first step is really to make it clear that this council as a goal, as a policy, wants to see that whole network tip to tip, so to speak.
Um, Mr. Barron, would the administration like to have a chance?
Yep, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I had to find my give button. Um, so uh, thank you, Councilwoman Herr, and, and thank you for sharing them uh, with us, or sharing this amendment with us. You did with the other ones too, in advance, um, to, to let us take a look at it. Uh, appreciate your point of view, and, and the administration supports this amendment.
Um, Ms. Radman, I saw your flag. You can speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Radman, District Six. Um, I, I appreciate this amendment, and I think I'll support it as well. But I also think it's important to distinguish um, the need for um, bike trails as um, leisure and recreation, and the need for bike trails as transportation. And um, I think one of the strong needs that, you know, is, is quite uh, acute in District Six is um, need for bike trails as transportation, because we have, um, you know, because it's a relatively compact city, and there are a lot of people without cars. So um, I just, I hope that that's, you know, factoring into the conversation. I'm seeing nodding, so I know you understand that. I just wanted to make sure that that was part of this conversation. So, thank you.
Ms. Feedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Feeder, District Five. Um, I'm gonna piggyback on it, not necessarily this exact um, area of the, the document, but um, transportation-related. So on page one forty-eight and one forty-nine, there is, and I mentioned this at our work session on Tuesday, that's the area that covers um, the Bay Bridge third span. Um, so I'm glad we see, I, I'm glad to see transportation here this evening. Um, what I, when I read this, a lot of it is what the state has determined through their study, NEPA study, and where we are at the present time. Knowing that a third span, whenever it comes, um, is likely, it's likely going to be twenty years from now, wherever in the county. Um, 'cause I'm staying optimistic. But um, my, my question is, is there room to add language to support a continued effort with the state to look at mitigation tools that are available to address the current traffic dilemma caused by the existing Bay Bridge? Because the fifth district is very active in this project, and they have studied traffic mitigation tools across the country and are bringing them to me on a pretty regular basis, and I think that there is an opportunity to add some language. And I, I just wanna see if that would be entertained. I don't have it ready at this point. Um, but I'd like to know if that would be a conversation that would be entertained, or if we're staying clear of the Bay Bridge in this document. I'd like to expand, basically.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Barron.
Uh, thank you, and thank you for the comments, Councilwoman Feeder. I think um, Pete Barron with the administration, uh, as, as you're well aware, the County Executive has been pretty loudly uh, in opposition to the um, uh, third span plan. Uh, obviously, everything's dependent, as, as a probably a becoming a broken record about the words on the page of, of any proposed amendment, but conceptually, we're there. I, I, I don't think it would be an issue for us to talk about um, looking at ways to mitigate the impacts of the existing problems caused by the Bay Bridge, but also um, looking to um, really rethink uh, the need for a third span.
Thank you. Ms. Radman.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Radman, District Six. On my theme of transportation beyond cars, um, I think that that really should be included as part of the conversation, whether it's, um, you know, express buses, whether it's, yeah, I, I would love to see a train. Um, you know, I think we should be looking at options, because I think one of the ways that you can, one of the best ways to get traffic off of the roads is to get people in some other kind of vehicle besides a car. So I hope that we can include that.
Sarah Lacy, District One, I'm gonna offer a comment to piggyback on that too. Because, you know, my district has not only BWI and I think all the light rail stops in the county. And there are proposals for magnetic levitation train and for Elon Musk's Hyperloop, all of which would run through my district too. So I think transportation is a huge issue. And I got concerned looking at some of the proposed land use changes of, you know, we, I guess as a general comment, we have to, I think it's gonna be very tricky for us to strike the right balance when so many of the potential transportation elements, including the third span of the Bay Bridge being built or not or where, or expansions of highways and say the Route Three corridor, right, upgrades to that infrastructure. They're not in our direct control at all. And there are higher levels of government that can say, it doesn't matter what you want. We are expanding the airport. We are putting in this particular, you know, magnetic train if you want, or we are putting the third span here despite everything you've said. And I have not yet been able to reconcile in my mind how our planning will intersect with some of those things that are beyond our control, even despite our best efforts to advocate for what our residents want. I guess no one wants to comment. It was a very profound comment I just made.
Isn't that so? Pete Barron with the administration, I think I would agree. And I'd also agree with Councilwoman Raviyan's previous comment about this. I think, you know, we try to tackle some of this in Move Anarundal, but you're exactly right. The county is never gonna be building a magnetic levitation train ourselves, right? That's gonna have to come from, if it comes, that's gonna have to come from a higher level of government and a bigger, bigger, deeper pockets. So I think the point is well taken that what we're doing here has to take some of that into account. But we also have to recognize what we aren't able to at this level control. I don't, I would, as you just said, I don't know how we sort of reconcile all of that in this document necessarily, but your point is very well taken.
And I'll just, I didn't mean, you know, any slight to things that are in our control, like bus service. That we can ensure that we expand bus service frequency and routes and access and those kinds of things. But Ms. Raviyan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Raviyan, District Six. So I, you know, obviously, I think it's not even really a choice. We have to agree with you that, you know, there are things that are beyond our control that the federal government may decide to do or the state government may decide to do. But I, you know, I think to the extent that we're able to come to some agreement about what we as a county think is best for our county, we can be better advocates in the long run for our county, even if we ultimately, you know, don't get to make the call. You know, if we can get all on the same page, I think that helps us enormously.
Thank you. Sarah Lacy, District One, I should just add, I was thinking that, you know, this document can actually say those positions. And I'll be thinking of some potential amendments to be able to say that more strongly. Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I have a question going back to the goals, policies and strategies. And I apologize if we were supposed to be focused on amendments at this time or transportation. I do apologize.
It's a free for all, really. And in ten minutes, we're gonna take a break. So go ahead.
Okay, so I know that you may not be able to answer this question this evening. But as we are amending, potentially amending this area of the document, and we think about prioritizing. When I prioritize, there are many factors that I take into play. Urgency, the staff cost. Is there a way to estimate in a perfect scenario for the county to reach all of these goals by the time allotted? What staff that would take, what potential cost that would mean? Cause that, when we're making decisions down the road, I think it would be helpful. I know you cannot answer, there's no way you could answer that question this evening. But it's something that I have questioned. What would the cost from a staffing perspective and execution perspective and estimate what that would be?
Perhaps they've already calculated it. Mr. Barron?
I'll turn that particular question over to OBZ. I think you're correct, Councilwoman Fiedler, that, you know, that it would be complicated. It is complicated, probably not possible to fully answer that question for each individual goal or strategy. But I do wanna flag that many of the goals and strategies would be dependent. And as Councilwoman Pickard's amendment speaks to, would be dependent on future action. And in many of the, it's a critical question to be looking at as individual goals or strategies are brought forth in more concrete ways as an amendment or a bill down the road. So that's absolutely something that is in our mind and something we need to be thinking about. But we also need to be recognizing that a number of these things are just at goals. And how we get to realization of those goals. We may, we may say we're gonna take one, we may envision taking one way in this document. But the council down the road, as they're looking at in a particular proposal in much deeper, fine-grained detail, would say, actually, no, we can do it a lot cheaper or it's gonna cost a lot more. And maybe it's a goal that we should push pause on where it's so important that we need to do it anyway. So I'm gonna ask maybe Ms. Pomper or Mr. Kaiszler to try to tackle a little bit on some of that. Cause it's a very important thing that we need to keep it from mind.
Mr. Ziegler, may I take the first pass at this question? Thank you. Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. If you review the goals, policies and strategies that are listed in volume one, the table starts on page seventy-four. You will notice that there are many, many agencies and departments involved in implementation. OPZ does not have the lead on every one of the strategies enumerated. In addition, we also identify whether we think it's a short-term strategy, like it's more urgent, as Councilwoman Fiedler referenced when she prioritizes. I do the same thing. What's the most urgent? All the way to, some of these things are ongoing and some of them are long-term. This is a planning document. So for instance, when we prepared the fiscal note for this piece of legislation, we did identify that there isn't a fiscal impact with this document. But there potentially will be a fiscal impact as we get into some of the legislative items or programmatic items. To actually try and determine right now how much staff time might be needed to implement all of this or whether all of it will be implemented or studies of some of the recommendations that may become a dead end because it's simply not feasible to implement the strategy. I don't think that that would be the best use of staff time now to do. I do think as we get into implementation, we will have more detailed fiscal notes as we come forward with legislative proposals for implementation. And we discussed in great deal, in great detail last week with Councilwoman Fiedler, when we were talking about her implementation bill, how much analysis has to go into finding what the right solution may be? Because a recommendation could say that there should be a legislative answer. But what is that legislative answer? Like, what is the legislative problem right now? So there's a tremendous amount of analysis that has to go into this. Mr. Ziegler, I don't know if you have more to add, but I think that that is a tough answer. And I don't see it, I really don't see that there would be a benefit right now in trying to answer that question.
So Steve Kaiszler, Planning and zoning officer, I agree with both Mr. Barron and Ms. Pompa. And I'll just, I'll add a little bit. I have often been asked in my career, well, what would it take to do this planning thing? And I'm like, am I including the public? Yes, why is that important? Because if it's just a staff activity, you can pretty much estimate how much time it will take to do it. But when you invite the public in, my rough guess throughout my career has been you take whatever that time is and you multiply it by somewhere between three and four times. One of the things that we're embarking, that we're gonna be doing very differently in Anarundal County, with the GDP, with the implementation CACs, with the region plans and their stakeholder advisory groups. We are inviting the public in in a way we never have before in Anarundal County. And if you just think of the ebb and flow of what happened with the GDP CAC, it is impossible to predict how much will be, how much time effort will be necessary to accomplish the priorities that are in the GDP. So it's, I think you asked the question almost in the sense of, is there a way, from an engineering standpoint, to give a really good estimate of what it would take to do these things? And the problem is, while you could do the engineering analysis to come up with an answer, I don't think it will have much value. And I think when you look back after a relatively short period of time, you'll see that it probably wasn't useful time put together towards it. Whenever we start a project, we try and do that. But it is the question that is so difficult to answer. And when you invite the public in and you're transparent, it makes it virtually impossible to guess or estimate accurately.
Mr. Pruski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Andrew Pruski, District Four. While this isn't in the same lane, it's the same vein of the conversation. One of the things that as council members that we can do is to make sure that we share amendments with each other. And also, as we go through this entire process, you're gonna have people calling you twenty-four seven, right? People that don't want something or they do want something. And I think the key piece here is to try and make sure we work collaboratively and come to a consensus if possible. We might not always get there. I do wanna talk about the staffing issue though, and this is something I'm really keen on. Unfortunately, as I said before, I did not sit on a small area advisory committee. And this happened twelve years ago, right? It's been a long time. And the county has changed and we continue to change. But I'm hoping that with this plan, this twenty forty plan as we move forward, if there are areas where we have to hire more staffing, where it can help projects that we wanna see move forward quicker, I'm certainly willing to do that. I think that we have to look at that carefully about what are the priorities of the council, the public? And I think this is a good way, as we go through this process, we identify that. Twenty forty's a plan, but when you go to comp rezoning and we continue this process, we're gonna hear not only from the community, but we'll see the efficiencies that maybe we need to look at. Just like I always say in the transit oriented development centers, there has to be greater density. We're talking about it, but we actually have to do it, right? We gotta go to those next steps, create laws and policies. So again, I know that sounds kind of a response and, you know, sharing what's there. But I think that it is incumbent upon all of us to be a part of the process and the solution as we go forward. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I appreciate that very thorough response. I know it was a complicated question. So just to summarize what I think I am hearing, no, there's no nailed-down estimate on cost. But the good news is Councilwoman Pickard is introducing an amendment that would give the flexibility to handle this on a case-by-case basis.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Barron?
I think the one edit to that comment I would have is that the plan as it exists, the council already has the power to do this on a case-by-case basis. Councilwoman Pickard makes it, makes the document much clearer to non-planner types who might read it, that the role of the council is still retained. And these policies will have to come forward in a variety of ways and will be looked at each individually.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Ms. Pickard, did you have a related comment? Because it is seven forty-five, so you can have a moment, but then we need to take our break.
Break time.
Never stand in the way of a break. Okay, then we are taking our break until eight PM. And I hope to see you all back then.
Madam Secretary, whenever you feel it's appropriate, we should call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, it's eight o'clock. I'm just going in order of district for this, the purposes here as well. Ms. Lacy?
Present.
Ms. Pickard?
Present.
Mr. Volkey?
Present.
Mr. Pruski?
Still here.
Ms. Fiedler?
Present.
Ms. Radvian?
Present.
Ms. Hare?
Present.
Madam Auditor? I did see her pop in earlier. Uh, Linda Shewett?
Present.
Thank you. I know Madam Auditor is um, here listening. Otherwise, we do have all seven council members and Madam Legislative Council present.
Okay, thank you. I saw Ms. Pickard's flag.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to go ahead and uh, introduce a a second amendment that I have if um. We could pull up the one about the policy, development policy map. And the critical corridor, um, maybe just the map, maybe not the amendment, but the map, uh, Ms. Schultz? So I'm, uh, again, I had um, a very productive. Meeting with folks in office, uh, with Ms. Pompa and Ms. Carrier in OPZ and. I would like to um. Talk a little bit about the policy development map. Uh, in two specific areas in my district regarding the critical corridor. So in looking at um, there's two sections that are deemed critical corridor on the current land use map. That basically take exit areas around ninety-seven, the New Cut Road. And the Benfield Road and 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 have added those areas as critical corridor. But the Veterans Highway, this is this yellow portion, um, this is just a draft map. This isn't a, this isn't a professionally done map. But um, stretches that connects those corridors together. Veterans Highway is um, a perfect example of where we should be focusing our energies. Uh, our, our, our time with transit, with um, connecting those two exits. Um, as well as the, the thin, older commercial areas. Plus, there's also an area that connects on the other end of Crane Highway, which incorporates. An area around BWOC Hospital um, that I would like to add to that critical corridor. Um, it was discussed in our meeting. Um, the map is being, being uh, made. This is the, the yellow area here. Just extends the, the Crane Highway, uh, connecting it to Route one hundred. Um, that is also a, uh, while it, the hospital is there and the hospital is, is expanding. Um, but the, the commercial areas um, there also have um. Tremendous potential and we should be focusing our, our, our energies there. So that is just what, something I wanted to, to. Show my colleagues this evening in this public forum and uh, maybe get the uh, comments from anybody. And the administration before Monday night.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Councilwoman Pickard. Every meeting with Ms. Pompa and Ms. Carrier is a productive meeting. Um, so uh, I'm gonna ask, uh, first, the, the administration supports, uh. The amendment appreciates the, the collaborative work to, to bring it um, forward. Um, if, if he is still on, I think Mr. Hughes might uh, have a little bit to say on this. Uh, a little bit more in the details. If we've lost, oh, no, that I see, yeah. There you go, sir. It's all yours.
Hi, Patrick Hughes, Office of Planning and Zoning. Um, yeah, we looked at this um, this potential amendment. And it, it does seem to make sense in, in both cases to extend the. Critical corridor designation to encompass um, more of the commercial areas along uh, Veterans Highway and then. Also out to um, encompass the areas on uh, Hospital Drive. So this was kind of an easy. Uh, thing for us to, to look at and and agree with.
Oh, good, thanks. That's awesome. Appreciate it.
Who else has a question? Or comment? Okay, now you're all awfully shy. I'm getting a little bit.
Well, um, you know, Madam Chair, I did mention that um, six to eight was a nice timeframe. Are we ready to wind it up? Cuz I turned into a pumpkin around now, but anybody else?
Some of us last a little longer than you, Ms. Pickard. Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just for the record, I have concluded all of my questions for the evening.
Well, excellent. Um, any other council member? Including you, Mr. Volkey, I know, I know you're here, so you just have to chime in. Okay, well, for myself, I will say, while I could ask more questions, I. I'm going to take more time to formulate them more specifically. Mr. Pruski?
Madam Chair, maybe motion to adjourn?
Okay, well, I'm sorry to have ever made everybody take a fifteen-minute break and come back, but. Um, I also, you know, wanna err on the side of caution, let no moment of possible. Productivity during this work session be lost, so. Okay, I think we're, we're agreeing to adjourn then. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. And uh, no promises that we'll adjourn this early on any other meeting involving this, but okay, don't, don't take this as a pattern. It's just once. Have a great night.